Mr. Chair, you're all set.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm now going to call the Norfolk County Commissioners' meeting of Wednesday, September 29th into order and take the roll. Commissioner Stady.
Present.
Commissioner Collins.
Present.
And Commissioner Shea is present. We have a quorum. I'm now going to ask everyone to rise and join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On Thursday, March 12th, 2020, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Act Chapter 30A, Section 20. That order was effective immediately until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. On Wednesday, June 16th, 2021, by action of legislature, the order was extended until April 1st, 2021. This meeting is live and also we're having a Zoom meeting option. Thank you very much. Agenda item number three, please. Three, four, and five are similar.
Remind that the Commissioners consider table.
These are minutes of our last.
Number four, three and four. They're not ready. The eighth and the fifteenth are not.
Okay, number three and four. Do I have a motion to table, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Number five is ready for.
Second, roll call.
Right.
All in favor?
I didn't have a roll call until three. I'm sorry. Okay, let's go to five, which I.
I'm ready, Parliamentarian of the board. It's a new salary. I move approval of the meeting minutes of September 22nd as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Number six, public comment. Director Cronin, have you had any?
If I may, I would like to make a public comment.
Is somebody here?
Certainly. Mister Norton.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Dennis Norton. I reside in Foxborough, where I chair the Foxborough Democratic Town Committee, which I'll refer to here for brevity as the FDTC. So I'm here this afternoon representing them. At our July meeting, the FDTC discussed the fact that the county commission had not yet filled the position of Chief Information Officer at the Registry of Deeds. And at that meeting, the FDTC voted unanimously to have me write a letter to Commissioners Shea and Collins, asking that they change their vote and support the CIO appointment. So I wrote an email to Commissioner Shea and Commissioner Collins on July 20th, knowing that it would be considered possibly at the meeting. I think you folks had a meeting on the 21st of July. But as of today, September 29th, I have had no response. At the FDTC meeting September 20th, the members were looking for further information on where the issue stands and I had to tell them that as far as I know, there's still no CIO at the Registry of Deeds. So I'm here this afternoon on behalf of the FDTC to publicly call upon Commissioners Shea and Collins to move quickly to appoint the CIO at the Registry of Deeds. It's clearly a vital position to the smooth running of the registry, and I articulated that in some detail in my unanswered email. The, frankly, the FDTC views the current lack of a CIO at the registry as a potential breach of fiduciary responsibility on the part of commissioners who have voted against the appointment. And I'm just conveying that information to you. So thank you for the time. I hope you will take to heart the request that the FDTC has made to you and move ahead and appoint a CIO at the Registry of Deeds. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis. I apologize if this board or I didn't get back to you on a memo that I received, if I did receive it, and I believe you're adequate. I'll go back and check. We've received a lot of mail back and forth. Originally, we were and still are involved in litigation on this matter. And we received advice of council not to comment. Secondly, there is a CIO employed at the county, and I believe the date of his employment was from the first week in August. It could have been the last week in July. And it's the very same individual that was originally applicant, applied for the job, and the only individual that was interviewed by the Registry of Deeds. He is working at the county, and he's working in the position of CIO. So I don't want any misinformation to go out. We do, since then, we have developed an answer that we've sent out to various groups, particularly boards of selectmen, based on their petitioning us on a number of questions. I will see that you get this answer immediately. But I, I don't want you to be laboring on anyone else under the false impression that we don't have a CIO.
We do have a CIO. I appreciate that. Not to interrupt, but I don't want to go away with the wrong understanding. So you have appointed a permanent CIO to the position at the Registry of Deeds?
No, we have not appointed a permanent. We have appointed a temporary CIO until the whole matter is reviewed. And actually, being a subject of litigation, we didn't do anything else after that. But prior to the litigation, we termed it temporary while the outside study was done, looking at all positions in the county. That's not the only position that has the term temporary. It was finally explained by our personnel director to that applicant, and he still took the job based on the terms that we offered him. And in fact, working.
You're referring to the Abrams report? Is that?
That's all prior to the Abrams report, not. The Abrams report is just being released now.
Okay, I thought it was due in July sometime, but okay, well, that's very helpful to know. I appreciate it.
It was due in July. Last week, 80% of it is in. Next week, we're going to receive the final two matters. And then the whole Abrams report will be released. Abraham's report. But I really don't want to say anything else, but I apologize that you did not get an answer. We got a letter from the Dedham, from the Milis Board of Selectmen this week, and we crafted an answer here for my fellow Commissioners and I to sign today, and I assume we're gonna do the same for for you, and I will, I'll find your address. I know you're the chairman of Democrat Committee, so you'll be easy to find.
Yeah, you'll find me, all right. You can find me at the, at the state website easily enough.
August 9th.
I'm going to, I didn't want to take too much of your time. I know you.
That's all right. That's why we have the public forum. Last thing I'm going to say is, the CIO housed at the Registry of Deeds, temporary CIO housed at the Registry of Deeds, came to work on August 10th.
August 9th.
August 9th. I'm sorry.
And Mister Norton, if I may, that was the applicant that the register was seeking to have take the position. And in fact, the person who was the CIO there for many years has, is still working there. And he's guiding this, this new person along, showing them what to do. But he, the person that supposedly retired, he's been back for months.
Okay, that's, all of that is very reassuring, and I can report that to, in fact, I'll put out an email to my people because people are anxious to know that. So, but I'll wait until I get your reply first. You know, so that I have that as well. So thank you very much. I've got to move on to do some other things, and I'm sure you do as well. So I'm going to take my leave. Thank you very much, and goodbye.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Number seven, appointments.
No.
We have no appointments this week. Old business of old business. We have no.
Okay, I'll fill out a director's report. I'll ask you a director's report.
Okay, we do have some old business, but it's on the, further on the agenda, the matter in Waymouth for Mister Dede.
Yeah.
On the right away.
Personnel matters?
Personnel matters for consideration. We have one at the agricultural school.
I move, Mr. Chairman, yep, I move the appointment of Christian Hagstrom of Sharon, Mass. As a part-time cafeteria worker at the rate stated effective.
On second. Motion made and seconded to approve the appointment of Christian Hagstrom of Sharon, Mass. As a cafeteria worker at the Aggie School. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Mr. Chairman, payroll and expense warrants?
Yes.
I'll move the following, Mr. Chairman, with your permission. First of all, payroll, County 22-13, in the amount of $141,872.40. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you. Next.
Second item, Mr. Chairman, item debt interest 22-2, in the amount of $232,640.63. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Third item is Wallace and recreational facility sales tax of 92721, in the amount of $3,328.75. So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Fourth, expense for the county of 9522, in the amount of $544,193.15. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, another expense for the county. This one's item 09-05-22A, $500. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. This completes payroll and expense warrants. Number 11, bid openings for the pine sawdust for a period of three years at the Norfolk County Agricultural School. This is a bid that we do every year, every three years, I'm sorry. There's only one bidder this time, and it's the same vendor we've had in the past.
Ask what that's used for? Pine sawdust?
Oh, it's for the animals.
Oh, for the animals.
Yeah, I have the bid here.
Okay.
Nancy's right here with the bid.
Oh, we're too soon to open it up, you're saying?
I don't believe, I just believe that all the bids are in.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't have them all? I'm sorry. I thought we were one.
Oh, no, it's just stated at 1:30.
Okay.
But I believe I do have.
Can we go by this on the agenda and come back to it? Sorry.
Yeah, it might be better, just to be sure. Circle back. Okay. Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah.
Number 12, contract awards. We have none. 13, we have a request from Norfolk County Bar Association to hold a number of free legal clinics and various Norfolk County courthouses. Address to us from Virginia O'Ridden, who's Executive Director of the Norfolk County Bar Association dated September 20th. Various dates beginning on December 7th of 2021, February, April, June, August, and October of 2022. They revolve between Quincy District Court and Dedham District Court from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday evenings. This has been a standard. Peter knows better than I. It's been on the agenda for many, many years. We do give permission generally?
We get permission, and I think we ask them to pay for the janitors to clean up. I think that's what we've done in the past.
Yeah, I had flagged three questions, Mr. Chairman. On that, I'm sorry, past practice, I'm sure, but who covers the cost? And maybe we should do is, as a courtesy, run it by John. Circle back to John McGowan.
We do good.
Those courts are open. Quincy, they mentioned Quincy and Dedham, just to make sure it's okay. Maybe Director, the new chairman is Chairman Shea as well, maybe later know that.
Yeah, that's fine, but I think we can, can vote it today and then, and put all those safe, keep, make sure all those safeguards are still in place.
Okay.
And notify the court clerk.
So we could vote it pending authorization or final confirmation from John McGowan.
I feel bad if John takes a look at it, make sure it's okay.
That's great.
You know, okay. So I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman. If you want to allow the Bar Association of Norfolk County to conduct evening legal clinics, clinics from the hours of 7:00 to 8:00 on Tuesday evenings for the dates of December 7th, February 1, this is in 2022, April 5th, June 7th, August 9th, and October 4th at the courthouses they've requested, and on those dates requested, subject to the review and approval from Mr. McGowan in terms of operational costs being covered and facility being adequate to take care of it. Sufficiency?
I'll second that, yeah.
Motion made and seconded to grant request from the Norfolk County Bar Association to hold various legal clinics beginning in December of 2021 and running to October of 2022 monthly in the Quincy District Court, as well as the Dedham District Court on Tuesdays from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Pending notification of the Superintendent of Buildings, Mr. John McGowan, and the clerks of courts in the various two courts. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is item number 14. Held over from last week.
I had item number, oh, okay, held up from last week. Okay, sorry, go ahead. You go.
Citation from the Land Court notifying the Norfolk County Commission that John Dede has filed a petition for approval of the new Land Court case plan number 7056C of 2021, which depicts a subdivision of private property that apply the 1961 Norfolk County layout of Commercial Street, Waymouth, Mass., document 228387. Request for review of citation and revised land court plans and vote by the Norfolk County Commissioners related to signing of this limited condition ascent was prepared by our county council attorney, Scott Lopez. Last week, we, this meeting, this matter was on the agenda. We met with our county department head and surveyor, Patrick Higgins. We also had the pleasure of meeting Mister Dede, who was on the call with us, and I'm told, and in front of you Commissioners, for your signature after we vote is the final petition for signature, so Mister Petiti can go forward with his new subdivision in Waymouth, very close to Waymouth Landing. And this is known as a limited ascent agreement. I have it in front of everyone. I believe all the i's dotted and the t's across. Both our county engineer and our legal counsel have signed off. So if we have any questions?
Is it necessary to read the entire motion?
We did last week. Do you want to read it again?
Yeah, I know. I just wanted to make sure we're doing it properly, so.
I believe it is.
Okay.
We don't do that many of them, but we do them.
Okay.
And there's two, actually.
Because this is the gentleman that called last week, right?
Correct.
I think it was on the.
Now, weren't there, were there two? In my packet, there were two. Were they the same, identical, or?
This is the actual limited ascent, which has the, the meets and bounds and everything, and this has been the vote of the Commissioners. We sign them both. I don't think you need to read, read the vote, but I think you need to read the ascent.
Oh, I was going to read the vote. Mister Buckley might have some clarification.
Okay. Through Mister Chair to Commissioner Shea's question, the document I forwarded from legal counsel, there are, there are two documents that both require signature, but are firewall when an outside email comes in.
Okay.
Duplicated it, so that's why you got more documents.
That's so. Okay.
I did bury that myself.
Okay, no problem. Thank you, Bill. All right, so I, I think it's maybe it might be moved the following, that we're actually voting. So maybe I'll make that my motion, Mister Chairman.
That's fine.
I think that would make sense.
I'm, I'm going to defer to the man with the, well, two lawyers here with us, so I'll defer to you gentlemen. Plus Scott.
Sound good, Peter?
That's great.
All right, I'm firing off. Okay, so I'd move to, that the Commissioners on this date execute in the matter of petition of John Dede, Land Court docket number 21 SBQ 07056-01-001, a limited ascent to plan number 7056-C, to the extent that the revised plan is entitled definitive subdivision plan Sacheese Circle of Commercial Street Town of Waymouth, Sheet 2 of 13, Plan 7056-C, Sheet 1 of 2. And definitive subdivision plan trans, trans traverse data sheet, commercial sheet, Commercial Street Town of Waymouth, Plan 7056-C, Sheet 2 of 2, are in substantial agreement with the Norfolk County layout, here I reference as NCLO, in the order taken for highway purposes of Commercial Street dated August 22nd, 1961, and filed with the Norfolk Registry District of the Land Court on August 22nd, 1961, as document 228387, as well as other monuments of the NCLO that are available on the ground at this time. Further, I would move the limited ascent is subject to, conditioned upon, and made in reliance upon, the written representation of Edward F. Packet, Deputy Engineer for the Land Court, that the aforementioned revised plans for Plan Number 7056-C, with their additions and changes, will in fact supersede the plan referred to in the citation that was served on the county Commissioners in the matter and will become the final plans for Plan Number 7056-C. And lastly, I would move to adopt, ratify, and confirm all actions heretofore taken by the Commissioners in connection with the matter, which is a subject of the foregoing vote. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor of signing the limited condition ascent as approved by Attorney Scott Lopez? All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. We'll get this right out for Mister Dede. I know he's anxious to go to the Land Court. Thank you.
Hello? Official one to sign?
Is that Mister Dede?
It is.
Hi, Mister.
How are, if I could just add this again, dealing with this Mister Higgins at the Norfolk County, he was so professional, always available, and so helpful. I really appreciate it. And I just wanted you guys, because, you know, you always hear the bad stuff, but
Thank you.
It's, it's good to hear the good stuff, you know?
Thank you. Thank you. We know it.
Thank you.
Mister John Patrick?
Appreciate it.
My sign.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Okay, that concludes the matter of Commercial Street, Waymouth.
Mister Chairman, could I ask Mister Higgins a quick question on this?
Sure. Patrick, we got a question coming your way. Go ahead.
Patrick, how many signed copies of this, original signed copies of this agreement do you need? Just one or multiple?
Mister Cronin, I'd have to check with Attorney Lopez, and I can get back to you on that.
Okay, fresh while the Commissioners are here, so.
Why don't we sign them all, and then?
You got one signed.
I can sign this one. This would be a second.
Yeah, let's do three.
Go ahead, sign them and send them out.
Yeah, thank you. Safe cap, Patrick, we'll get you three.
Thank you.
I'm sure. Thank you.
Yep, you got it.
Number 15, report on American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier this week, we had our weekly call with Plymouth County and Bristol County regarding the latest developments on preparedness of our portal to handle the ARPA. In this matter, I'm happy to report that a fourth county has signed on to the program. Barnsville is now part of this. It's like this, near on, it'll be a quad county program. At this point, Plymouth County was announcing that it intends to go live October 1st, which I believe is Friday. And Norfolk County, because we're the second one in the pool on this, will be proceeding without delay as early as next week or the week after to open the portal. Earlier this morning, I received an onboarding package from Clifton Larson Allen. There are several elements of content that they'll need from the county to open the portal and begin allowing access to the 28 cities and towns. Mister Buckley has secured the names of the ARPA coordinators, but we're going to need more information. But basically, the portal, the agreements that go with it are all in mind. And we're pretty comfortable at this point announcing that as the county opens the portal, we'll likely look at a minimum of 25% of the available ARPA funds to be available for award right out of the gate. Don't forget, we only have 50% of the money in the bank right now. So we're going to try to allot a certain amount so that we don't overspend that 50% within the first year. In any event, we're all encouraged by what Plymouth County and the developers presented so far. There was an extended amount of conversation this week with Mins Levin and their attorneys about the agreement that each community will have to sign to enjoin the program. I've taken that and I've sent it over to Scott Lopez for him to have a quick, quick look at it as well. As far as I'm concerned, it looked tight, right? So progressing, I'm hoping within a week or two to announce the opening of the portal. Coincidental with that, I've talked to Clifton Larson about having some kind of a Zoom announcement with our ARPA coordinators and stakeholders in the various cities and towns, so let them know we're open for business, and this is the training portion of how you can make your applications. Regarding other items, the performance evaluations are underway. I began meeting with my subordinates this week, and I'll complete that next Tuesday. I will tell you, so far, the meetings are refreshing. They're closed door, but they're productive. Each of the department heads have readily stepped up. They understand the need to produce goals that are in line with the guiding principles that you all embrace. So, so far, so good on that process. I wanted to present a copy of a new blue paper.
Wait, Mr. Chairman, this isn't under American Rescue Plan.
No, I think already.
They're not to be ruined.
Are we ending report of the county director?
It's actually time for the bid. It's 1:30. We got, it's the 1:30, the bid.
Right.
We have to go back to that, I believe. We can go back.
Okay.
Are we through with the report of American Rescue Plan?
We are. You're correct. I went into the Commissioners' report, and I'll stop there.
Can you report on COVID-19 response, and then we'll go to Nancy for the bid?
So Barnsville's on board, though, right? They're going to be joining us.
Correct.
That's official. That's great. That's great. That's great.
Briefly, we have three minutes before the 1:30 piece. The one item I wanted to point, put before you is a request at this point to perhaps have the county directors, Commissioners, excuse me, entertain the following motion relative to the COVID-19 protocols. I would propose at this point that all unvaccinated persons shall wear a mask or face covering that covers their nose and mouth, such as a fabric or surgical mask, whenever they are indoors on the premises of a Norfolk County building. Notwithstanding any provision in this order pursuant to a guidance issued by the Center for Disease Control, face coverings are not required for children under 28 years of age, anyone who has trouble breathing, anyone who is unconscious, incapacitated, or otherwise unable to remove a mask without assistance, or anyone who, due to disability, is unable to wear a mask, as well as those who have been fully vaccinated against COVID-19. This order would be proposed to take effect this afternoon, September 29th, 3 o'clock. It remain in effect until rescinded by the county Commissioners in the discretion. We have been talking excessively, well, not excessively, but weekly about the matter involving protectiveness for the uptick in COVID-19 cases. And it would be my recommendation the Commissioners consider this motion in September.
Any discussion on this mask policy?
Yeah, more and more towns are trending to requiring masking in
No question.
in buildings, especially if you're not vaccinated. Even if you are vaccinated, they're almost saying that, too. I would endorse that motion.
Sure. Yeah, so that's your motion. I'll second the motion.
Yeah.
I have one question.
Mr.?
I know you're good, Director Cronin. We're going to vote this at 1:30 on the 29th, and it's going to go into effect on the 3, 3, 3:00 p.m. How are you going to inform all of our people by 3:00?
Yeah, I was just thinking.
The order will go out, we'll, we'll blast the order out to all of our department heads and coordinate that message through email.
Okay, that's great.
Okay. Get it up.
That's good. That's good.
I was thinking 9:00 tomorrow, or whatever, you know.
A lot can happen between 3:00 and 7:00.
Okay.
All right, on the aforementioned Norfolk County masking policy, the motion, motion made and seconded and discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Your attention is back to item number 11, which is the bid opening, not awarding of the bid. I was ready to award it today. For sawdust for a period of three years at the Norfolk County Agricultural School. We have our purchasing director, Nancy, with us, Nancy Rockwell. Let's open the bid.
We have one bid for A.W. Graymount Jr. They're out of New Durham, New Hampshire. They hope that for three years, eight to 10 yards, eight to 10, 100-yard loads a year. $1,600 per load. Year one, same price. Year two, same price. Year three, no change. They are an existing vendor. We've been doing business with them for several years. This is for like all these horse and cow stalls and such like that of lining for their.
And this is a three-year bid?
Three-year bid.
Commence sometime in October or November, probably?
Yes. This would be sent up to the school. It'll probably be ready for award next week.
I would hope so.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
This is all news. It sounds like compared to like prior years or prior bids?
It's about the same. It's, I, I would, I would look at, I've already looked at the old one, and it's, I think it's gone like maybe $150. So it's sort of inflation that we see every year.
And how many loads do you know that they?
They get eight to 10.
Eight to 10.
100-yard loads a year.
Okay. So it's about $16,000. It could be, huh? Okay.
Sawdust?
It is. I know. Imagine that.
There's a lot of it.
Yeah.
Hundred yards, that sawdust is a lot.
Boy, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I need a motion to, to take it under advisement.
Yep, so moved.
Second. All in favor taking the bid for sawdust at the agricultural school under advisement to be acted upon on later date? All in favor?
Aye.
Back to the director.
Okay.
You get a COVID-nineteen response. How about number seventeen, further report of the county director?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned, the performance evaluations are ongoing. We have conducted several of them. So far, the department heads are very forthcoming in engaging this process. Um, also want to call attention to a new blue paper that I've been collaborating with Michelle Labadini on. This particular item, you'll, you'll observe visually, appears more streamlined, a little bit easier to read, and it delineates certain sections that are the submitter's responsibility, the commissioner's responsibilities. Um, we were offering this to you today as a chance to read it, study it, and we'll put it on the agenda for potential vote next week. Um, so if you have any feedback or thoughts, let us know, but I think it finds it to be a little easier to read and a little bit more concise.
Good.
I have a question.
Sir?
I know that in the past, we've had very similar form. We sign them almost weekly. And some of this was on the other ones, and some of it was not. Could you off the top of your head, before we sign this, tell me which, what is new on here, or? Do you know? I mean, I can sit down, look at the old, but I want, I want your input.
No, that's a great question.
And then I have a further question, and then I'll take it under advisement for a week, but I, I probably think we could be ready if the other commissioners are next week on the weekend.
Correct. Um, there, there are a couple of items, and I'll have Michelle speak to them next week when she comes in, but you'll note that, um, the boxes in the middle section all now include the items that have to be sent in with the application, including the application.
That, those are the things I'm generally talking about, but everything else is subject to review.
Yes, that's correct. Um, and what else did they, she added one other. The middle of the form, uh, all forms must be submitted to the county H R director no later than one week before any vote by the commissioners. As you all know, we've had some problems with receiving these forms at a more tardy date, and for the most part, we want to make sure that the H R director has a chance to review them, fact-check them, exchange any typos or issues with the submitter so that you get a final version before, before the vote. So we're making a declaration on every form. We need at least a week to submit.
Where does that say that? I'm sorry.
Right, right in the middle. Yeah, no, it's right in the middle. Box, box written in the.
So, could I ask a question?
Yes, that's exactly.
So on the form, you're saying no later than one week before. What's our current policy? Or do we have one currently?
Michelle can, Michelle.
We probably get the form Friday before Wednesday's meeting.
That's what I thought.
Because they have to be posted on like, on Monday.
Right.
But it's just the form that we get. It, it always had the job description should be attached, but they're never attached. So then when we were looking at that, we looked at the other things that we are required to have for all employees. That's covered in the contracts and it's covered in the handbooks. So we just thought, thought we would outline everything that's required on this form, so it all can be attached together. And that we can be making sure that every department is being consistent with this.
No problem, but you're backing up the deadline to file, though. You're saying a week before, not the Friday before.
Correct.
So it's basically the Wednesday before the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Gives us a little more time.
Just gives us a little more time.
Okay. A lot of towns do that. You gotta get it in Friday before the meeting or something like that, but that makes sense. Okay. I like it. Looks good. I like it.
Okay, uh, give you a week to think on it. We'll put it on the agenda.
Right. I, I, I don't need more than a week. I, I just want to say that when I came here, I just sat where Richard is sitting and uh, was somewhat prepared and do pay attention, but I always wondered some weeks we get them, some weeks we didn't. But I found out further that some departments uh, send their people out for quarry and physical, some don't. You know, I, I, I think with all we're going through, particularly with the management, outside management study, it's time to do all these things. New people bring new ideas, but the foundation of all of this, eighty percent of this is a carry-on for what we've always done. So every now and then a review is in order, and I still play back to the employee's handbook, which is a gigantic task. It's a perfect example of what I'm, no, I don't want to talk about today, which is a perfect example of what I'm talking about. But this is a small piece of that. Doesn't mean anything's gonna really change, and knock on wood, I can't off the top of my head think of when um, something's going wrong, but you know, we, we, we manage these courthouses, where our employees are in and out of them, they're very sensitive. The quarry is very sensitive. Also, we have a, a, a fair amount of our employees, if not half, who do physical labor, and, and I think the physical is very important. I don't think it's that exhausting or that hard to do. We, we, we don't quarry anyone without telling them. We're aware of everyone's rights here, and we certainly pay for any physical that we take, uh, ask people to take, and we send them to the doctor, correct?
Mm-hmm. We get the report back, correct.
Yeah, I'm sure. I think I know there's no possible legal issue involved with this.
All these are covered in our contracts and our employment currently.
In the personnel board that we have also in charge.
So I guess.
Okay.
We're just tightening up, and I, I, that's all we see these things, and I congratulate you for doing it.
Go ahead.
Uh, John and Michelle, because, um, just for the last five years, I, I realized that some people never took a physical, and some people were never quarried it, and not in a negative way.
Yeah.
They didn't get sick, or we didn't find someone who was working, it shouldn't be. But it does come up occasionally, and I think it's particularly in school, but in the, between schools and courthouses, it's, it, the quarry is mandatory. So we're doing it forever.
Yeah.
Except the commissioners, thank God. Okay, I'd like to look at it for a week, but I think we'll be ready to go next week.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last item for the commissioners, uh, please save the date, October thirteenth, two weeks from today at noon time will be our dedication across the street for any O'Brien, uh, Black and Stone.
Great.
I'll let you know on that next week. That's the date, though.
Yep, two weeks from today.
And then we'll have a meeting afterwards. So we can economize that day.
So I have this to Commissioner, thank you.
Couple of questions?
Sure, Commissioner.
So just real quick, uh, D C A M, any follow-up on that yet? We're waiting, we've got an appraisal and they said a couple of weeks they'd get back to us on a couple of questions.
The, the only update I could share, I was gonna put on the, it's a light one, is they did award the contract to the, um, environmental engineer who's doing the site assessment.
Okay.
Um, she has, the company engineer emailed me and said she would be reaching out to me personally to get access to information in the building as soon as she got her notice to proceed from D C A M. I have not received that request yet from her, so other than that, I don't have any other information.
Okay. Wallace and Golf Course, the recreational facility, forgive me. There was some question on walkways and on signage. Where are we on that?
So the walkways are gonna be hopefully approved this evening by the advisory board.
Okay.
Um, the last week, uh, was it last week or the week, week before, this commission um, approved the three separate funding requests for um, the walkways. So it made its way to the finance committee tonight. The advisory board will address it. And the signage, I've sent you an email, the latest, which is extraordinarily frustrating. Um, the company that's producing both signs are now projecting new delivery dates and Commissioner, you know, if you watch those emails, they just keep moving the data. But we're staying on top of them, and hopefully they'll deliver quite soon.
Anything new to report on Stone District Court?
Uh, yes, yes, there is. Um, the, the engineer has completed his work. Um, I spoke to Marty Vicki last week. Um, he needs to prepare the scope of work for the, um, bid for the revised work. Um, we did receive a waiver, as I told you, we don't need to put the whole thing out for thirty days. We get a waiver to collect three quotes from eligible firms, and Nancy has that lined up. So if we make the scope of work, the new engineer informed us that he's gonna need more time to suss out his subcontractor reports to make it part of this new bid. Um, so as of last week, he was looking at approximately five weeks before the contract would be completed and bid to the proper vendor. Um, I have pressured him to accelerate that timeline as much as possible. I have contacted the contractor, Enterprise Corporation, to, um, help them understand two things. Number one, they have the two rooftop units commissioned around their, on their yard, and we are incurring expenses as a result of storage. I believe the cost today is two thousand dollars. So I asked him to move the two units onto the court, um, property behind the building, up against the building, because when we do bid, there's no assurance that Enterprise will get the winning bid. So they must, these units must be made available to go against the contract. Um, but we are, he understands the position we're in, that we will be bidding pretty shortly, and hopefully he'll be, he'll be participating in that process.
Okay.
But the goal along the long is to
Okay.
to, to get it up. You know, one thing I do want to alert you all, just to go on the record, if you may, Mr. Commissioner Shay, um, I spoke to John McGowan this week, and you all may remember back in June when the registry boiler went down, uh, that we were looking to get a new boiler put in. Um, the order was placed with a new boiler. It had a long lead time. It was projected to be around late November. John has continued to contact, uh, the vendor, and that date is still late November, and now it's trending into December. So he and I spoke yesterday, he's working with at least one contractor to, um, be prepared to bring in portable heat. This would be an outside trailer effectively that would bring steam into the building and substitute this broken boiler until we receive the new model.
Hard getting pot, it's hard, everything.
Be tidy.
Yeah, it's just COVID. It's hard getting pots.
And when, I don't know if you remember, but I know the record will reflect that when we first were notified of this, and we said heat we, we commented that it's gonna come fast and.
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Thanks for that update.
So it's on our sites.
Yeah, it's tough, tough. Gonna have heat. It was chilly this morning. Felt good, though.
Still nice.
Complaining after that Florida humidity, I did not complain, but.
Knock on wood. This is, this is still pretty good, Mr. Paul.
Oh, yeah, this is great. This is great.
Compared to December.
Uh, you mentioned a letter. Will we go into Milis?
I have sent you, I put, do you saw a letter from the Milis Selectmen?
Right. Do we have a response already drafted?
We drafted it this morning. It's very similar to the one we've been sending to other boards.
Was it an email or a letter?
No. Uh, uh, we want you to sign it today. I think Director, Assistant Director Buckley has a a, a signature-ready copy for you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
It's a template of the same letter that we.
We're gonna send Dennis Norton to send. Is it Dennis Norton in Foxborough?
Yeah, none. The Foxborough, Foxborough Chair.
N A U G H.
Right, right.
Dennis Norton.
So he's the chairman of the D T C, whereas this is from the Board of Select Board of Mil.
It has similar verbiage, but it's the same story.
I thought we had sent out, I could be wrong.
We did.
I thought we had sent out letters to all the select boards.
We did.
To let them know. Okay, okay, all right. Maybe it's a little.
And, yeah.
Okay.
But Democratic Committee, but I don't remember his letter, and I admitted that I'm wrong.
No, 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 not to the Democratic Committee. I meant each, I thought each town had been sent a letter from us.
They were.
All right, all right.